Afternoon.
You're very good.
Nice to meet you, I'm Dale.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
I think we're all set. Oh, yes.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Daniel's here and he's got a thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Hey there.
Dale's been helping us with everything.
USDA.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Dale Muster, yes.
Beautiful school.
Everyone. It's already.
Go up here first.
Yeah. Yeah. And the front. The house. Oh, why even bother? I'm serious. I know this. So. To learn anymore. Yes. Watch you. Well, we did have a chance to do. I think so. I think. I was a lot. Yeah. I don't want to. Yes. Hello. There's nothing. I don't think. Now they have. That's not good. My family. I'm happy. So. Yeah. Having this chair. Yes. They all. Yeah. We've got this before times. Right. He's watching the best. I didn't. Yeah. May I?
Tennis. Hi.
I'm. Sound. Why? Go cheer up. Oh, I'm very. They know. I think. You're gonna ask lots of questions. Mostly on.
That's what you think.
Really.
All right, we're gonna start the meeting at five o'clock and by six thirty. Actually, probably a few minutes before six thirty, we will be done because the regular work of the school board, the monthly meeting will begin right at six thirty and we're required as we get public notes to start it at six thirty. So whatever needs to be said here, it needs to be said within the next hour and twenty five minutes. If you want to speak, please sign in so I can keep track of who has and who hasn't spoken. It's possible we get through everybody who wants to speak before six twenty five. It's also possible we don't. And if we don't, we're, we'll ask you to write your comments, write your thoughts and share them with the, with the school board. We'll read them. What, who we know we're going to ask to speak is the athletic director and then the part of the team that has been working on this project for several years on the business side, on the construction side. USTA is here, Lewis County Tennis Association, the wrestlers are what have been represented. And after that, we'll open up to other people and take comments or thoughts as time allows. This school district in May of last year signed a memorandum of understanding incorporating Lewis County Tennis Association and the foundation to move forward on building a wrestling tennis facility behind Olympic School. And that's what we're, that, well, that was, that was the direction a year ago. And since then, there's been a lot of work done, been questions raised. And we want, the purpose of this meeting is to put everything on the table. Everybody who thinks it's a good idea, a bad idea, everybody has questions, whatever. We want to hear it so that the board is fully informed. And that, that's why we're here, to have the board listen and maybe probably ask some questions, but to listen to the work that's been done. And so, thank you for coming. And we'll start with the athletic director.
Sit. Sit.
Join the family.
Join the family. Sure. Well, I'll be, I'll be brief. So lots of other people have a chance to get up here and, and talk. I'm just, I think my, the chance I have up here is just to advocate for, for all of our kids. I think that's kind of, as my role is not only the high school athletic director, but the middle school athletic director, just kind of looking out for all the best interests of, again, all of our kids. I don't know what decision will, will be made and how things will move forward from here. I just hope that in all of those decisions that all kids are put first. I, I can see a ton of potential benefits to this project. I, I think I've expressed in different conversations that, you know, I'm trying to be real excited for, for this opportunity for, for kids. I think I still have some concerns, which I have expressed at different points. But when I think of all kids, I think of not only tennis, but CMS and OSCPE and all the opportunities that multiple groups have a chance to be able to use a facility like this. And that's, that's my hope is where that as we look forward to, to this project and to see where it goes, that's what can kind of happen. And I'm excited to listen to some of the presentations and some of the people talk today to, to learn a little bit more. But again, I, I think when I'm thinking of, of all kids, I think, I believe I have a few more concerns than reasons to be excited right now, but I do see a ton of potential in the project. And I'm excited to see what happens next.
Can you share?
Um. Dangerous question, Kelsey. Yeah, I think, so, so my root concern, I believe, um, my honest root concern, like, do not believe the project was created with kids in mind first. I don't believe the project was created with WF West kids in mind first. And that is from everything I've heard and learned and listened to. That's a concern I have is I haven't, I haven't been that, that hasn't, my mind hasn't been swayed one way or another there. I do believe that as the project shifted into the site that's proposed, I think kids were thought of and involved and, and a part of that. I honestly, and this isn't really my place, I have some real questions about the operational processes of, of the building and, and how the district would be able to, to work with the LCTA at this point to, to make that a viable project, not just for a short term, but for eternity, right? I don't want a project that is created with the idea that if it fails, that then we can use it for whatever else. If we're gonna create a tennis wrestling facility, I want to create it forever. That's what I want it for. And so, a short term plan and a short term project, I don't think is, is something that, I think that's the reason why maybe I'm not as excited as I should be, is because, as the project is oscillated back from a metal structure to the bubble to whatever else it might be, I think some of those plans are short term plans and some have a longer lasting effect. I'm more excited about those that, that facilitate function and activity for all kids for a long term. Yeah.
Hey, you've said all kids, all kids, all kids.
Yes.
Lot. And I, I just want to be clear that this whole project all the way along has been, yes, the middle school wrestlers for sure, that it's the LCTA, it's a Lewis County Tennis Association. So these all kids would be wedlock, on Alaska, any, any kids who would be wanting to use it, correct?
I'm assuming so. That's how, that's how I understand the project when the MOU was created with the LCTA. It was, it was Lewis County in general that was included.
This happens to be.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I should have said this at the beginning. The memorandum of understanding has a couple of key points. The Shale's School District, every school district in the state of Washington right now has budget problems, including Shales. Ours are probably less severe thankfully than some, but still they are significant. And part of the MOU is crystal clear and the board is crystal clear, we are not going to spend school district funds, build this for to operate. And so, the burden is on the users and the stakeholders who are here tonight to show that that can be done. It can be built without school district funds and operated without school district funds. The second part that I again should have started the meeting with is that the MOU says that the facility will be open to the high school tennis teams, boys and girls, Centralia and Shaleus during their seasons in, in climate weather, which now they don't have those options. And that will be for free. So there will be more free opportunity for our boys and girls who play tennis than in this community by far than there is today. Those are just some basic ground rules. And we're gonna hear in a little while from the USTA and they have a similar arrangement with the Camas School District. And we have that contract. And they also lay out all of the opportunities for students for free during the school day. I'm sure they will talk about it later on. Those two basic points. I don't want anyone leaving here thinking, at a time the school district's pinched for dollars, they're gonna spend a bunch of money on the tennis facility because that is not what this is about. So, uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Tommy. All right. Jeremy Corwin is next.
Thank you for taking the time to, to hear us out. Let's see. Well, let me tell you a little about, about myself. My name is Jeremy. I have a bunch of kids from Centralia. And we play tennis. And we've been very involved with tennis for, for a long time. But the other factor is, I, I was bringing to this group, this steering group, the Centralia aspect, because it is the regional tennis facility. So I was bringing the Centralia aspect to it to represent Centralia. But I'm also representing the business operations side. I've operated business here in Lewis County for twenty five years. And we do work all throughout the United States. So I'm familiar with business operations. And one of my tasks with this steering group was to determine what's the best course of action for operating this. So today, we're gonna have several different presenters. After me is Steve Ward, who you will be familiar with, has created the, the Centralia College Campus, a pretty magnificent campus over there. Then we have from USTA and we have Pat Reeves from USTA, Pacific Northwest. Then we're gonna have the Lewis County Tennis Association present to you. And then we'll have Kirby White present the wrestling aspect. So I like to try and let folks know kind of what, what my expectation is. You may have other expectations, but my desired outcome, our desired outcome from this meeting is that we give you a history on what has occurred. So everybody's up to date on all of this. We give you the building options. But then we would like a commitment from the district to continue the project. And specifically, we would like a commitment on a decision, a decision on what type of building. We're gonna present to you metal versus dome. We would like confirmation that the location that has been selected is appropriate. And then we would like some confirmation that you're willing to pursue an agreement with the USTA Pacific Northwest. So that's our goal with this presentation. We hope to present you enough information that you can make some decisions. So our proposal is a dome or a metal building located on Bishop Road across from Ornesey Smith Elementary School. Our other part of the proposal is that it can be operated by USTA Pacific Northwest, who's very familiar with operating these facilities. And that there would also be an agreement with Lewis County Tennis Association to cover additional expenses that are not necessarily covered by USTA. And as Jay mentioned, there would be no cost to the district, either in operations or in building. So just a brief item that talk about tennis. Why do we have tennis for youth? Well, it's one of the few sports that people play for the rest of their lives. Many people like me, I didn't play tennis, but I played football. Football is not something that you can necessarily play all the rest of your life. It was a great experience for me, but my kids, we got involved at an early age playing tennis because we realized it's a light home sport. It's a low impact sport. And the cost is very minimal compared to other sports. Currently, we have a lack of access. We only have one indoor court here in Lewis County. So we're not even have leagues, USTA leagues, which fosters additional participation where there's no ability for teams to practice when there's inclement weather. There's limited instruction. And for instance, my two boys who are, who qualify for state, they have to find other places to practice during the winter time because they, they qualify in the fall, but then they play in the spring. But there's no place for them to practice with enough, there's no available space for the current, current situation. There is a USTA league that does come out of our facility, but the home court is steamboat. So all players actually go up there to play. So four courts would significantly improve access and we would also have the ability to have the wrestlers have their practices. Now, at the very beginning, we, we realized that there were significant benefits to a regional tennis center. The number one thing is our region has become known as a hub for sports. So we want to foster, we want to continue that regional hub concept, which gets the kids involved in an early age too. We want to enhance the appeal of our local area and increase the quality of life. We definitely would have improved access for children to play tennis if we had another facility here. And at, and my discussions with Centralia College, they said there's a possibility of having a tennis team back again. Now, when you have a college team, it actually helps develop the kids at a younger age because then they have some goals of possibly playing for a local college team. So I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about our journey. It's been five years. We started in fall of twenty twenty. And we began searching for a location. Greg Lund did some initial searching. I did some searching and hopefully grab that. Thank you. And we looked at lots of different options. The school district, industrial buildings, yard birds was an option at the time. We actually went out and measured different gyms to see how could we fit these in. So we, we did everything we could possibly do to try and find a location. In November twenty twenty, we, we got a commitment from the Shale's Foundation to pursue this project. We formed a steering committee, which you can see some very familiar names there. We had Jenny Collins from the Shale's Foundation. And Shale's Foundation has been very instrumental in helping us along the way. They provided a lot of guidance and a lot of support. With Shale's Schools, we initially had Ed Rothman, then it changed to Warren, and then Tommy Elder has been a part of it. And then you could see the rest from LCTA. We also had the wrestlers part of it. We would actually meet every two weeks or at least monthly. We were continually meeting over the past five years. So initially, we had a site selected behind the middle school. And then we found that an environmental survey had some challenges with it. So the first site you could see there on the left, it was inadequate due to some protected trees. So we came up with the second site that you could see there that's right by Olympic, that is over an existing field.
You want questions as you're going through some of this? Are you under way?
Um, why don't we wait? And I may answer some of them. Is there something glaring? Do you want me to? Go ahead.
Well, if you go back to your last slide, I guess one of my questions that I'm only asking this because I want to make sure that I am doing my due diligence and asking about all of the concerns that have been raised. So you mentioned that the first site was inadequate due to the trees. I'm wondering about, you know, future usage of land. If we put this facility and want something that's lasting, are we ever going to need the land that this facility is being built on? I guess more specifically what I'm asking is, you know, some of the other land around somewhere other campus, is it usable if we needed it? Or is it inadequate due to committing or whatever these problems are treating?
I've lived here for fifty years. And that land has never been used for anything. And nobody has come up with anything for it to be used. There was little kid football on it for a while. But as far as I know, we've never even capital projects wise, never even talked about using that land for anything. So I, I, I'm just saying, not a big deal. But I mean, I don't think we need to just save it in case something comes up, you know?
I think it's a really important question. That's one of the questions we have for you. Is it the appropriate place? I thought we did, we have looked at this pretty extensively. We did talk to the groups that were using it as practice field and said, is this okay? And, and they were, they were told to find the, moving their practice toward the other end. Does anybody else have a comment on it?
So one of the questions, important question, but if you look to the west, there's a lot of land there. And it all thanks to the Shaws, belongs to the Shale's School District, as does the property, just obviously to the, to the north, we find the middle school. So there is a lot of ground there still, even after this is built. And then, of course, you have Olympic. So I don't believe that taking this concludes what might be options in the future. And I'll just say that when the Shaws gave that forty two acres on the west side of Bishop Road, their vision was it be a campus and, and it be able to be developed over time if the district has more needs for, for capital projects and building. And as you can see, there's a lot of available property and, and has had much more environmental work done on it than the, than the property that.
So our journey, I don't know if we have, where they addressed it, but I think it's an important question. I do think. I do think, you know, what is the vision for Shayles Schools? Where do you want to put it? I thought we did put a lot of thought into where this would be. We continued looking for sites and we continued looking on what type of structures we should have. We visited at least 10 facilities that are listed there from brick, steel, fabric and dome. But we added some architects again to it. And then we continued our fundraising and operating structure questions. Who's going to operate it? How's it going to be operated? How's it going to work? As Jay mentioned, in May of last year, an MOU was signed that created this agreement to go ahead and continue to pursue it. That's why we're back here again. We're reporting on this. We want to continue to move forward. The idea was no construction costs, no operations costs. We would have wrestling practice and that we would have at least at the minimum support time for inclement weather. So the regional tennis facility was, our proposal is a four court facility built on Shayless property, one court dedicated to wrestling for 10 weeks. And we've had regional support. Centralia Community Foundation has sent in a letter of support. Centralia, City of Centralia has provided support. They realized that this is an important feature that can help our community. The projected cost is about $4 million for the dome. Now, I can tell you, I personally am for the dome because I I would prefer to spend less money on a facility that is operational, that would work. I don't, I prefer not to spend a significantly amount more versus the facility that is not necessarily needed. We can, we can play tennis in a dome and the cost is significantly cheaper than a man ability. And there's a lot of great things that come with a dome. And I'll, I'll show you some pictures here shortly. The current funding that we've had, we've had over $3 million in pledges and grants and state appropriation. Now, some of those grants specifically set the proposed site as the one that was near Olympic. And then we had some local folks that have supported tennis. There's an additional funding that's available and our current possible then would be about 4.3 million. So let me show you a couple of pictures of what this would look like. It's a very bright, which is what you need for tennis. This is a four court facility with upward lighting. And Steve will get into some of the details on some of the costs associated with this. Another example of an indoor dome type facility. And I wanted to point out, one of the questions that has come up is, now, what if we decide to use this for something else later? What if, for instance, you know, Tommy had said, well, what if, you know, what what would want to use it for something else? Tennis, he didn't mention in tennis field, but what if tennis field? Well, these facilities are used for lots of different things. So I'm just showing you a picture here, that these facilities are used all over the United States for other sports, not just tennis. So this is the National Sports Center in Bling, Minnesota. Here's one in Anchorage, Alaska. So the whole idea is to get people out of the elements and it's a very reasonable cost. University of Massachusetts schools, colleges and schools use these quite a bit for practices, practice.
San Bart University.
Yeah, in fact, that there, I mentioned, there's several that are in our local area, yes, that that use these. I think a good question is, what will this cost? If someone was just present, i- if they wanted to use tennis, is this going to be affordable? So I did some analysis. This is 2024 numbers. But, you know, what would it cost for someone during non-school events? So if it's a school event, there would be no cost. But let's say someone wants to go play tennis. What does it cost somebody? What's the cost for somebody that's under 18 to use a facility? If you were a steamboat, the typical cost would be 193 a month. And that is assuming that you're a member, that you do two classes of tennis and that you have four additional four times. So I had to put some assumptions in in order to calculate this out. In Tunn Water or in the valley, it's about 151. Torvex is 96. And according to the USTA model, this might be a little bit outdated. It's about 78. It's definitely the cheaper option. The membership fee for USTA, you'll see, they'll let you know that it's a very minimal cost because the goal is to get people into the door. And I should point out that though we have these costs, you know, Torvex, though it may cost $78 or $96 a month, we also are getting additional things at Torvex. So I don't want to say that you're only doing tennis at Torvex. When you're paying that fee, the monthly membership fee, you're also getting other things at Torvex. So I think the other question is, why the local existing tennis court, you know, doesn't increase tennis play? What what's the the issue? Well, I can tell you, I am extremely grateful to Torvex. They, my kids, I have had four kids that have qualified for state. And I have all my family members pretty much play tennis. It's been an excellent place for people to learn tennis and to grow. So they've, they've had a tremendous impact on Lewis County. So and they've continued to operate for a long time when things were challenging. But some of the reasons why it has not increased tennis play is because there are some lack of vigorous marketing and programs. We only have one court, so you can't necessarily do additional things. The, there's a lack of a feeder program. And then when we had three courts years ago, it was easier to draw people in. But there, some of these programs were not necessarily available. We don't currently have the USTA leagues. We're not, you'll have tournaments. And so when you have a tournament, the kids are more willing to play because they have competition. It's one thing to go out and practice and go to classes, but it's another thing to have some tournaments to go into. So you're going to hear from USTA and after Steve chats. But I just, just a brief note about USTA, they're nonprofit. They have many local, they have several local facilities that they operate. And they'll talk a little bit about that. And they just have a track record of success. I think for Lewis County to have the ability to have a world-class organization to kind of step in and help us be successful in this, it's a pretty great opportunity. So the next person that's going to present is Steve Ward from himself that used to be. Oh, by the way, we do, we will have opportunity after people present. Of course, if you have some urgent questions, go ahead and ask them. But if you want to have questions at the end, we're all more involved with this, so respond.
It's hard to follow, Jerry. He says a smooth job. For those of you that aren't familiar, my name is Steve Ward. I am retired, so I'm not from anywhere above my house. Those of you might know me, so some of my background on is I have from 1993 to 2021. I was Vice President for Finance Administration at Centralia College. I oversaw over a quarter million square feet of either new building or renovated structures, master planning, and also probably close to $100 million of the project. So I, I was happily retired when I got a phone call saying, we need help kind of bringing this together. And one reason that I, I didn't drive a single nail with those buildings. So don't, I did not build those buildings, okay? I just coordinate a lot of the stuff that goes on, finances, construction, et cetera. But every one of those buildings, there are multiple users to it. So we have a science building over there, but I have administrative offices, English faculty, you know, et cetera. Teaching over there, the latest building, the Transalta Commons is student services. But I also have instruction in classrooms, student programs, and a big chunk of that's all within the community. So I'm used to working with a broad interest group or singular buildings. So I've been very successful in blending multiple uses into those buildings, et cetera. So when this came up, it seemed like I had to work with the Shayless Foundation, the city, the school district, the tennis association, et cetera. I'm, I'm very, very accustomed to that. I thought I'd put that all in the past. It looks like it, you can run, it's like the Hotel California. You can check out any time you want, but you really never leave. So anyway, so as part of what I would call an uncle with the actual construction piece. And so in that, we looked at it. And as you saw earlier, we've gone and we've studied 10 structures. We went with a group in the steering committee. We looked at 10 different structures and we narrowed it down to two. And the two things we're looking at here, we started with a steel structure, metal structure at first. And then the person that we brought in to help us with the pricing on that, it was way more than we could possibly ever raise. So we would never have an indoor facility that we'd be spending all of our time raising money. And then recently, and because of that, we went into what's called a fabric tension building, which is like a large tent, okay? Which is commonly used all over. And there are several in the Northwest that we visited. And then we went into dome structures, okay? And we visited those as well and started studying those. And then finally, while we're still just going down the road of the dome structure, we got connected with a person from CNC Metal Structure who has done steel buildings here in this area of the industry, the city of Shayles jurisdiction. And fairly recently, so we had great numbers and we pulled numbers to him. And and these numbers were three, you know, these were February numbers. There's been a slight increase in metal. But if there is a big tariff increase, the metal structure will definitely go up. So it, you know, at this point, these were February numbers when we're looking at it. So what we did is I worked with a gentleman named Aaron Paul. He's been a great person to work with. And as I said, very familiar with working with the city of Shayles. And we went down and we did a side by side comparison between the dome and the metal structure. We come down to the very bottom, 3.8 to 4.9. Now, both of those numbers include a 10%, a 10% contingency on the dome structure. But he was, he's saying he was still pretty comfortable with his numbers. So his contingency number that we use was 5% for the steel facility. But still, the privacy contingency, we still came to 4.9. So we are looking at this now and so we're between 3.8 and 4.9 million dollars for this particular project as far as what our cost goes. And I'll hesitate right there to see if there's questions.
I think you should make clear if that's the whole project.
That's the whole project.
Not just the dome, but that's the court.
That's the support.
So.
In fact, if you look about, there's a number in there called court resurfacing, okay? That's $200,000. That's a different surface that we put on there. So if we use a dome structure, one of the things that we're looking at is the the center of the dome, the center of that surface can actually be asphalt, okay? And then we put the plain surface over the top of that. That's very common practice and that's a little less expensive. However, with the steel structure, in my conversation with Aaron, that steel, the concrete slab is actually part of the support, the engineered support with the steel column. So you can't then go and put asphalt in or save some money on the, on the concrete. So that's one reason it's a little bit higher. But on the flip side, it also, it adds to the rigidity and the engineered structure support that they need for that building. And this area here, where 20 years ago, we had a certain code for structural integrity. We are now on the same, pretty much the same fault line as, not the same fault line, but the same code structure that's happened since the moment. So I mean, if you were to go to look at the Transalta Commons over at the college, we left a lot of the engineered structural support for that displayed so people can see. And it's, it's, this is the most rigid earthquake proof building that we have in this county at this point. It's just the most modern building in that, in under that category. But the court, the court resurfacing, that line item is in there because that is a plain surface. It's just like asphalt dirt. If this was a soccer field, which is my little, okay? Because a soccer field, it would need the turf, okay, across all of that. But we have both those in both numbers. But it's my question, that's the against terms of life expectancy in your dome. Okay, so the dome structure, they're saying they're warranty for like 20 to 25 years. But there are domes that are actually still off, that are way past that line. And I was looking at fabric tension buildings, okay? Which is almost identical material on the outside. And they're usually 30 years, but they're warranty for 20, 20 to 25 years. On this dome structure that we're looking at here, we would love to consider, and I'll show you an example of using a Tedlar covering over the top of it to help fight some of the algae growth that grows on the fabric in the area. There, there's in this presentation, I have here are some examples of what that looks like.
What is the maintenance cost? One of the feedback that we got to ask about was that something about the dome has to be taken down every year and cleaned.
It's not correct. It does not have to be taken down and cleaned every year. But if you, you will have to, there's a, there's a growth that will happen on the outside. If you look at membrane growths, it's the same growth that you have in membrane growth. It aesthetically doesn't look good. It doesn't really impact the fabric that much. But if you were, and there's some, there's an example I'm going to show you with some pictures, a new material that they've used called Tedlar that, that, I mean, I'm looking at this company called Farley. Okay, which has been highly recommended. Of all the domes that we visited, they said, you really want to get a Farley dome, okay? And I'll talk a little bit more about Farley there. But at this point, we're just looking at a dome. But there's a, an exterior covering called Tedlar they put on it. And it actually fights that growth and, you know, no, you do not have to replate it. But if you don't clean it, it's going to look a little dinged and you'll see that in some of the pictures.
So there, just to be crystal clear, there's not going to be like a monthly $40,000 cost to take it down and then have to replate it again or that?
You know, we visited one, one dome that we visited was Tuol, then in Portland. And what they did is they covered their outdoor courts. But in the summer, they take them down in like bay and gyms and they put them back up in October and November. And they drew that because they want outside courts. And that's about a $40,000 labor cost to do that. But they take it down, play outside and they put it back up. But they're also very public sports facility. So they're a part of a park district and their district budget coverage. That isn't an option here. Good question. You guys should ask Jeremy.
We might have to call back.
All right. So the other thing was energy consumption. So when we were going through this, I, I then, I, I looked at multiple vendors that create these domes, okay? So they get lots of information. So I got from a GADON, which is one that is several domes up here in the, in the Northwest. And they got our zip code and they looked at our average winter temperature of 24 degrees, which is way older than both. Everybody in this room that lives here knows 24 is harmful, okay? We're not going to go to that point, but they did these calculations. And so we're building budgets based on this. This is a cold weather calculation. And you can see that the we have the different, you know, categories of systems in there. Inflation, heating, cooling, lighting. Then we have the units, okay? And then we have the quantity per year that they say that they're going to use. And then I worked with Travis Warren, who has left the district, but is very knowledgeable about this. And we use a Lewis County PUD cost on the cost per kilowatt hour. And this is for a total electric facility, okay? We're hoping that there is some sort of backtrack going on with this whole gas versus electric. You guys have been following that more, giving initiative last year about gas things that all of a sudden got thrown back out. So we're hoping that we're able to use gas because it's much more economically viable than electric. But this is all electric. So our costs are based on electric right now. So we broke it down, our total annual cost, their estimate based on these units that they're requiring for, for both inflation and heating and cooling and lighting is $41,000 a year. If we don't put cooling in, okay, then it's $39,000. We don't do heating, it's $11,000. And if we don't do heating and cooling, it's $10,000 a year. So these numbers have been calculated. This is based on, so you can take these units, okay? And we can actually figure out what we're going to take in terms of gas. So if we're going to use gas, which is what Farley recommends, Farley recommends using gas, okay? But bottom line is, we're kind of under a mandate from the state right now to use. Uh but bottom line is, we're kind of under a mandate from the state right now to use electric dome. So this is a worst case scenario. So now, this is for a dome. If we were to put this into a steel building, I can tell you the cost would be less, even with electric, okay? Uh because a dome, of course, it has insulation value, but not near the insulation that we're going to get with a steel building. So that's the million dollar difference between the, Steve, yes?
If the average winter temperature is forty degrees, do you know how much difference that makes in that?
Uh you're asking, that's how.
That's why, keep going.
So what are you, I mean, anticipating doing? Obviously, it's a large difference when you're, you know, forty one versus nine. Um you have kind of proposal for what you're planning to do with?
What I would say is your top number is forty one thousand dollars. And managing that building and whether we have twenty four degrees out there, whether it it's a white, blacked out building and you have good ventilation. And there are other passive ways of cooling buildings as well. Uh in the summertime, you know, do you really need it to be, you know, at fifty degrees or sixty degrees? Or, you know, or can you play that if it's eighty five outside, seven inside?
Well, the reason I ask is because um, and maybe this will come up when Mr. White comes up. But um my understanding is that there maybe is some concern with wrestlers being able to use it and safety if it's cold and their mats and that sort of thing. So um keeping kids first and that and this is on school facility and unfortunately that we have that. I just want to make sure that, you know, those temperature issues would be addressed or that the wrestlers truly would be able to.
Right, and we've been working with Kirby on this as part of this committee. And we did a study on the mats, okay, the density of the mats. And if we keep the building in fifty fifty five, okay, the mass will work. I'll have Kirby come back and hopefully, I have stated what he and I talked about. But I'm 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 pushing a lot of gear in here, so my memory is a little shaky there.
Thank you.
Questions, Steve? Yes, what's the difference in insurance?
Uh I couldn't tell you that.
I've got enough value. Uh the metal was ten thousand a year and uh the approximate, we have approximate of what the dome would be, about eight thousand. And by the way, for our proposal has been all along that we're not going to heat the facility. Uh and most of the, and uh the USDA guys talked about this too, that most of the facilities that are operated are not heated. I believe, I'll let them talk about that. But so the plan was about ten thousand a year for uh heating and about ten thousand a year for insurance.
So there were a lot of questions raised, okay, as we went through this process. And um so I have a, I have a number of slides on questions, okay? Uh so the main ones that that were asked is, you know, basically, why not cover the courts that we have now? What is the internal temperature target in the winter time? Why no locker rooms and won't that be a bit? Okay, so those are the questions that we had a lot of, and so I have uh answers for that. I'll just kind of go through. So why not cover the the W F S courts? And you know, that's what Canis is, you know, Canis has existing courts right now and they're covering them. And so we started to look at this compared to the Canis project. And so one thing is, when you look at the the way it's laid out, you can't really get a dome to cover that. Okay, it's not going to, they don't make the domes like that, okay? So it'd have to be a steel building. And I talked to Aaron Cole over at CNC Y A, you know, five months ago. And uh he said, it's really not a good idea uh for a lot of reasons, and we'll go into it. But I didn't, I didn't just sit there and make this up myself. I went and I consulted with somebody else to say, if you were to do this here, what would you run into? And I'll go through those. But the pros on on putting it there, and these are, and these are definite pros. It's adjacent to the high school and a lot of other athletic facilities. So it kind of makes sense, all the athletic facilities in one area. The courts are already there, okay?
But they would have to be totally redone.
I'm just saying, you know, uh that's a different issue. I didn't, I didn't figure clean the code, whether it had to be redone or not, but the courts are already there. The land is owned also by the, you know, by the school district. And you have fourteen other twenty one required parking spots, all of it. Okay, so uh whether, you know, and and so that, those are the kind of the pros, okay? So when you look at the two courts though, this is the difference. So you have a stacked configuration of six courts here, and then you have eight courts that are linear, okay? The linear shape lends itself to both fabric tension and to dome facilities easier, okay? Than to stack a piece up there. So that is a huge difference. And the other thing is, you look out closer more to Sixteenth Street, which is to the west or to the left that you're looking at. And then there's the practice field for football, that's to the right. And those things both can impact it as we're covering the sports. So when we look at the cons, the current courts don't have the cyclones that uh are necessary for USDA standards. And our whole project has been starting the, you what's it take to have a USDA sanction term? So we build all of our assumptions and all of our layouts, et cetera, are around the basic minimum USDA standards. And that's been our driving, you know, focus throughout the entire four years I've been working with. The new building would fall under the current codes, including setbacks. So that Sixteenth Street becomes a problem, okay? They set it back and Aaron was the person to bring that up, okay, Aaron Gold and CNC. Which means that you'll probably lose two courts if you bring that back up. The stacked configuration, I'm a little backwards here. If you have to have a, oh, the center line, is there a point on this? Yeah, well, there's a point that I can just see. There it is. So the center line right here and the center line right there, you need thirty five feet clearance on that. So here you would have thirty four, one thirty five foot cable wall, a lot of cable going side to side. Here you would have that one here and one here. This would be a huge building, you know, connecting the two thirty five foot clearances on that. And flush you right next to the street already. So go back to this, uh the required things for steel, remember I was talking earlier, how the steel, the concrete slab, yeah?
It's five forty five.
Okay.
I love it. You'll give these slides to the board.
Okay.
Uh can you maybe just go on the the last point?
Okay, I'll just go right through the whole thing. Uh those are in there and then you'll have this paperwork, you can look at this also. At the end of it, if we cover those courts, we're going to lose two courts. So you're going to be down to four courts for the community, okay? Uh and we're versus having six outdoor courts right now and four courts covered. That's ten courts, you go from ten to four, you'd be having six courts less than you had with the jets.
Two things, first of all, these people who live on Sixteenth and Kelly get this monitor. I mean, it's just, that they look at and right now they can look through the fence and it's lovely. And the other thing is, there's a whole lot of people in this town who like playing tennis outside in the summer.
You would not have, no, you would have.
And so if we covered those courts and lost two a month, then.
So I did not, on behalf of the school district, we're not going to leave these boys and ask what they would think about that. Because I had a feeling that would have been the result, but. So uh other questions, what's the internal temperature? The target is fifty to fifty five degrees, which you guys know that if we're going to be a ten to fifteen degree difference in the winter time. That would probably be where we were at, okay, most of the time. And that's sufficient for the wrestling program. Why no locker rooms? None of the dome structures we looked at have it. In fact, the uh Portland said they had a waiting list, they didn't have locker rooms in the dome. And people came to play and nothing shelled, that's what they they told us. I had a similar comment from Steve O'Donnell, which is a steel structure. And they built a locker room and it doesn't get used as much as they thought. And there was a lot of money into locker room. And I'll speak on behalf of that. When we remodeled the gym at the college, I, one of the things I was, the the gym was criticized on was the locker room looked like something out of a prison scene. Okay, so we remodeled it to have more of a health club look to it. And thought that the students would be using the shower. The the athletes weren't using the showers, okay? Their showers just don't get used. Uh and won't the fabric become dingy? This is the good one. Uh we're looking at using a Tedlar cover. So Farley had these two domes put up within ten miles of each other, okay? The one on the left has a white Tedlar dome put on top of it, okay? The one on the right has a standard uh dome finish to it. And they were there, the one in the the Tedlar was installed in two thousand and seven and the other one was two thousand and eight. And you can see what the differences in the appearance. And uh that's what you are getting at, and I think that's what we're seeing right now. This is what happens with using that finish. It's not really that bad on the acrylic top, okay? But you can see a huge difference. And the difference in cost for this project is about fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars, which we have a contingency and that's probably what we're using for. Anyway, so I'm done with my part, any other questions?
Thank you.
Was that fast, Mr.?
Thank you so much for your work on the hour, I appreciate it.
Great, well, honestly, I've been working with a lot of people.
Well, thank you so much for having us. My name is Pat Reeves, I'm the general manager of infrastructure for the USDA PNW. I'm Bill Seppich, I'm the senior manager of delivery partnership in advocacy. And I've worked the USDA PNW in this role for now seven years. Um uh opening and operating facilities. So USDA PNW was the first section in the country that um got into the management of tennis facilities. So we were, we were the uh beginning picks and that's turned out quite successful. So currently, we we manage Vancouver Tennis Center, which sits on school district property. Uh the city leases it from the school district and we lease it from the city. So as much bureaucracy as humanly possible, we jumped into that one and that was our first one. Um and that facility, all of the public schools in the city of Vancouver get a free tennis court during bad weather. And then we have four outdoor courts there as well. Um and the local high school there for Vancouver uses that as their home facility. So they play their matches there, they practice there every day. Um we have Galverd Tennis Center, which is COA, which we opened these two a day apart. Um and that we just lease from a private owner. And then our latest was, we opened a facility in Valley Tennis Center. And we, that is a partnership with uh the city of Longview, so. Okay, so our our mission is promote and develop the growth of tennis. Children, adults, families in every neighborhood. What I will tell you, and I really appreciate the athletic director coming up here. So I have three daughters that all play tennis, they all play sports. One thing that was always really difficult um for them is, as you know, boys tennis is in the fall. They get this perfect weather and we never see that. They're rare rarely in Vancouver Tennis Center. And then in the spring, um they're in every single day because the weather is not good. So I think a couple of years ago, we had a year where there was only four dry days. And so the girls are, you know, practicing and a bunch of kids on each court. And uh so we just felt like that wasn't fair. So that's really what pushed kind of the Canis project forward. Um but really, our focus, my focus, has always been kids, getting the kids out there playing. So if you came to Vancouver Tennis Center or Galverd Tennis Center at four thirty on a Tuesday at Vancouver, you would probably see a hundred and twenty kids out there. Um red, orange, green on half courts playing. And on other half, you might see fifty or sixty high school uh girls out there. And the same thing at Galverd Tennis Center, and now we're seeing the same thing at Longview. Um so we we truly believe this, tennis tennis transports lives. And I think Jeremy mentioned this a little bit, but I mean, tennis is, you know, from age three to age ninety three, we have all levels um that are playing at our facilities. We have wheelchair tennis that we host at the Galverd Tennis Center. We have blind and visually impaired tennis that we host, which is our newest event. So they play with like a foam ball that has um like a ping ball, ping pong ball inside of it with BBs in it. And so they just play by sound. We have Special Olympics that play in our facilities. We have a loves hermit autism class. So we make it uh accessible to anybody that wants to play. If they can't afford it, go scholarship them. We have uh now tons of scholarship kids and adults at all of our facilities. So that will never be a barrier to entry. Um if you can't afford it, we're going to make sure that you get in there, have the ability to fly. We're, it's a great place to work. So um not only do we run facilities, uh but we also manage leagues, we manage tournaments. Um so we are the governing body of Tennessee in the Pacific Northwest. So we're in Oregon, Washington, Northern Idaho and Alaska. Um and we are currently, you know, in talks with five or six other um areas to cover courts. We signed an L I with Spokane, Spokane School District and uh the city of Spokane to cover some of their same courts to run a somewhat model that we're doing. And purpose. Um so I know we've talked a little bit about a a community hub, but we'll run tournaments, leagues, social events. Now, our mission is to grow the game. Um really, our focus and has been our focus since day one is new to tennis or coming back to tennis. So maybe a former high school player, and gosh, I haven't played for thirty years. Or, you know, the five, six, seven, eight year olds are just, you know, getting, building the base of tennis in our communities. And I think we've done a pretty good job uh with that. And a large homeschool um programs at all of our facilities have been really successful for us. This is just an example of our wheelchair tennis that we have up at Galverd Tennis Center, uh which is pretty cool. And then we're going to add that to all of our sites. Yeah, so the the bad word, pickleball. Don't be sorry. So I will tell you, at Vancouver Tennis Center, we have four pickleball courts outside. Um they do get some use. And then our newest facility in Longview in Valley, we took one of the tennis courts and we put two pickleball courts on it. So we do have for the wall. Yes. Um again, talking about our community hub model, this this kind of gives you a quick snapshot of who we are, who we employ, um what's important to us, our value system.
Oh, uh what is the process like for, you know, our students? Again, this is on school property, students first.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned you offer scholarships for students. How burdensome is that for them to come in and try to fill out for a scholarship? Or is there any ability to have some sort of partnership with the district for um, you know, students that qualify for free university loans? I mean, a lot of our community and students aren't in poverty. And so I would never want it to be a barrier that they can't have access to something on our property.
Yeah.
And real quick too, just all feedback on that. I was, yes, I mean, and, you know, I used to want to throw a double course and play out there, you know, on my space and. Tennis can drive twelve lives, so I'm going to work with that association. And able to help, the scholarship piece is super important to myself, it's such important to all of us. So uh we really made it as easy as possible to get those scholarships. Uh we do raise quite a lot for those who perform directly over the community, that's our goal.
Yeah, I would commit to, if you wanted to give us a list and like, here's the scholarship list, we would scholarship every one of those kids. So it would be that easy for us. Um, yeah, I love that, that that's even a product, something maybe we should look to doing in our other sites. Um since we are the governing body, so we have access to, so when we opened up Vancouver Tennis Center, we had a community day with James Blake. We hosted the Davis Cup, we hosted Fed Cup. When we just opened our Mid Valley facility, we had like a fun day with all the high schools, which are the start, uh former number one park in the world. So we will do fun events like that all the time at our facilities and we'll bring those uh tennis stars in. So these are some of our current partnerships um that we have, like either local colleges or local schools. I love the maybe opening or having any college, having college tennis here, that makes me super happy.
You give us a print copy, we can read it.
Yeah. Yes, um and then we have court sponsorship. So we have like a dedicated team, like our shared services team, which really differentiates us. So we have accounting team, we have a fundraising team, we have a human resources team. We have unbelievable leadership at USDA PNW. So really, our job is to focus on the tennis facilities, which is nice, instead of having to worry about, you know, HR, accounting or any of that stuff. So our job is like, let's make sure these are the best tennis facilities around. Uh that is the list of tennis tournaments that we ran last year. So I think it's sixty five tennis tournaments at both our facilities. So we were basically running uh more than one a week between Vancouver Tennis Center and Galverd Tennis Center. And we will do the same thing uh here, we'll run tons of events, get people here, get pets beds, and grow, grow that partnership. Uh really important to us to make sure kids are playing at all levels. So we'll host every type of tournament imaginable. Um and we'll try to get high school districts or. And we'll try to get high school districts or anything that the high school, I love high school sports. So anything that we can get here as far as high school is concerned, we'll go after it. So.
It's primarily weekend, right?
Yes. Yeah, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday. Really they're moving into two, like one day events. Just it's easier for parents. It's like start at twelve, end at five. That's the deal. We're, we're in the past. It's like, maybe you play Friday, maybe you play some, you know, it's just a little harder to schedule. So we do a lot of tournaments that are just timed. And so that's been really popular with our parents. I do think we align mission wise, we're nonprofit five oh one C three, and that just kind of explains our community hub model. You know, we start with the, the high school program. We have, you know, we would like to, you know, do park and rec stuff around the area. Cause everything that we can do will be in the schools, like in the gyms, if there's space in the gyms to do like. Foam balls, pop up nets and really grow that base and with the hopes of just bringing everybody into our facility. It's been really worked really well with our other two facilities. And it's starting to work well at Mid Valley as well. So here's just some. So currently right now in the United States, the. The industry standard is one indoor tennis court for every ten thousand residents they have. So in a area, this area here, eighty-six thousand, hopefully that's still correct. Yeah, we should have, you know, eight, eight indoor courts in this area. And I think we currently have one. So we're seven shy of where we need to be. This talks a little bit about our section. So that lists all the sections that exist in the US. And if you'll see Pacific Northwest, so we are. The top of the country as far as annual growth is concerned. It have been every year for the last five or six years. Our, you know, CEO and CO are really entrepreneurial and really are kind of moving the needle as far as play opportunities in the country. Same thing, just, you know, how many, how many people are playing? I think one, you know, thing that we talk about a lot is like the man, like people that want to play, but they just don't have the opportunity to play. So if you live in an area like this. Tennis is so difficult to get started that I just think people just move in other directions to play other sports. And this talks a little bit again about the latent, latent demand. That we have in the United States. So we're really pushing again. We need to get, grow the base, get more people playing. Okay, so this, how do we define success? So retaining and growing our membership, which we've done in all of our facilities. So every year, year over year, since twenty eighteen. We've grown our facility numbers, more diverse play opportunities, which we talked about a little bit earlier. Growing our adult new to tennis and tennis one-on-one. So we have a six week course. And a handout. You'll start once per week for six weeks. And by the end of those six weeks, you'll be able to play tennis. It's been a really popular course for us. So we host four of them per week at Vancouver Tennis Center, four of them per week at Galvera Tennis Center. And they're always full every time. And so, and then out of those twelve or fourteen people per class, you think about eight of them stick. And so we're kind of recycling in about sixty-four new players every six weeks in our facilities. And it's. They're generally the most active and aggressive and they want more court time and they need lessons. They want to play more and get on league team. So it's been, it's been a really popular for us. Growing our red, orange, green. So for those of you that are not super tennis enthusiasts, so tennis. As you're younger, you play with a smaller racket, bigger ball, a smaller court, smaller net, just makes the ease, ease of use much easier. We had talked about already, just making sure it's affordable for everyone and that we operate in a physically responsible manner. So here's just some of our products and services that we offer. I think Jeremy talked a little bit about leagues, which is one of our lifebloods of our facilities. Lessons camp, special events. We'll have a pro shop in our facilities, free string rockets. You don't have to go elsewhere. And this gives you kind of an idea of the classes that we, that we host. So we have tons of classes and programs. That we host. And this is like a monthly schedule that we'll put out. And then to the right is. So yeah, some of the events that we host. So we'll get that out as well. So everyone is really clear, like. You know, what classes can you take? What do they offer? What does it look like? We have classes that you sign up for the month, but we also have drop-in classes. I said earlier, from age three to ninety-three, that's, that we cover all of them. We did put in here kind of our performance. And so if you look at this, you know, it's pretty small.
Why don't you just give us the summary?
Yeah, I'll give you the summary. So again, for us, we're hoping to break even after year three and we understand that. So. So we're obviously committed to, and we know that we're going to take a loss for at least the first couple of years, but we know that year three, four and five, which has happened in our other facilities. In the black, it's never going to make a ton of money here. That's not why we're here. We just want to grow the game and offer additional accessibility.
And if you get into negotiation with the Shale's School District, how long of a lease would you want? We've asked for.
So I would say the average lease that we have is twenty, twenty-five years. And the reason that we've done that is because that's generally the life of the dome or at least the warranty of the dome. So that is, yeah, that's kind of where we're at now. But yeah, because we will invest, you know, all the startup and all that will.
How many USD facilities in Pacific Northwest have failed?
Ours? Zero. And I think what's, what's nice about our facilities is that we don't necessarily measure them. On are we in the black or we red? Like if we have a facility and accessibility is high or. Accessibility is high, we're getting tons of kids, I mean, people applying right tournaments and events and. You know, we're relatively close to break even. That's a success for us. You know, we're not paying the bills based on each of our facilities. So.
When we do this contract, you mentioned, of course, the same situation we've had with our girls tennis team. Through the spring, there's a lot of pre-annals, practices and matches. In the contract that we sign with you, would we be guaranteed that they would have first access for practice or matches? But no questions asked. The court is theirs.
Yeah, that's what we have with that Vancouver Tennis Center.
The board of questions.
And another thing I thought we would.
There's a question that the boards ask.
Yeah.
So right now, if it rains on March twenty-fifth or whatever. In the, let's say it's a weekday, the Centaria girls and Shales girls have one court. If it's open, they can pay to use.
Right. It's, oh, pay to use.
Yeah, yeah. There's a charge for it. It's a business. Now, this is built. I'm not talking, I'm talking.
Oh, currently. Okay, yes.
All right, this is built. Now, UST is operating under the terms of the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, assuming that that's what, and you just said that would be acceptable.
Yeah.
What happens? And for the same day, rains. So Trishaila's practice camp, they can't, girls can't stay outside. They go to this facility. Do they pay?
No. No, it's just. If they have those, so we, what we will do is for the entire season, we will block out the courts during their high school practice times. And then each day we take the court away. So we, we will partner directly with the coaches. So what we do at Vancouver Tennis Center, we've got four coaches. We give them till one o'clock every day to let us know if they're going to use them or not. Some of them never let us know. I don't know why, but. That's just the way it is. But they'll let us know one o'clock, you can release my court, we don't need it. Or it's raining, if it's obvious, hey, we'll be in there. We don't charge them.
Superintendent just asked a question before we said, ask.
Yeah.
Would the USDA be willing to work with the district so that PE classes, we have three elementary schools, middle school right there and.
Yes.
If, if the PE teacher wants to.
Yes. Yes. We're not going to charge you if you want to get there.
They want to have a week block or a two week block for their PE classes where they learn the game of tennis. Will the students have to pay or will the district have to pay?
No. If you're telling me you could, you're going to put like thirty little kids in our facility or like, well, this is cool? Yes, the answer is yes.
And we also do some other things too within schools too. We have some programs that we actually work with PE teachers to try and get equipment at schools. Teach some curriculum to teach, so get a racket the kids have early on and help facilitate.
Yeah, they, they do not have that opportunity in any of these communities.
Yeah.
Here today.
Yeah, so we will, we'll provide rackets, we'll provide balls. Yeah, we, I love that idea.
Any other board of questions? For six, yeah.
You can always email me or follow me here, but copies.
Yeah, yeah. We, yeah, you guys have copies.
Okay, yeah. All right. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Kirby, wrestlers.
Oh, sorry. Well, I'm sorry.
Too much time.
Sorry. Well, we have twenty minutes.
I'll go first. I might as well set it as long.
Okay. Sorry.
So I'm Trudy Comeroy. I am part of the LCTA Lewis County Tennis Association Board. I'm also the Chair of the Fundraising. That's exciting. We've been very busy. So we are the. We are the Lewis County Tennis Association. We are also a five oh one C three nonprofit charitable organization under the IRS's designation. And we've been in existence for five years. This is the LCTA Board of Directors. They are well-known in our community, local names, some of whom play tennis for WF West. Some of whose children play for WF West, including one who has a daughter on the team now. So any of my Board of Directors that are here, can you just raise your hand? Say hi? They're all in the back. Very nice. So our mission, the LCTA's mission is to encourage and foster participation in tennis. As a lifelong sport within Lewis County by providing youth. With opportunities for physical and personal development and adults and seniors with an avenue for which they can maintain and healthy active lifestyle. We represent Lewis County's passionate tennis community. We have one hundred fifty-five subscribers. Plus many more informal followers on Facebook and Instagram.
I think that the LCTA has done a really good job with the girls tennis. I've noticed this year, the spring with the updates and, you know, really, it's been really nice.
The school board likely received a few letters this past week. Yep, with, from alumni and parents and parents of alumni who are current players. Some still local and others who are keeping tabs on the project from afar. This project means a lot to a lot of people. And everyone is eager to have the USDA involved. We're extremely excited at the prospect of working with such a renowned organization. The funds that have been raised for this project will be pivoting from the Shahela's Foundation to the LCTA. And in order to take this on, we will be establishing a firm financial foundation underneath us. Procedures will be in place to ensure that best business practices are followed, both before Don gets spent. And every time a Don gets spent along the way. We also plan to continue with the project steering committee, including Kirby White, representing the wrestling program and retain Steve Ward's services paid the funds that we have raised. We will follow the Steve, follow Steve and the committee's recommendations as to hiring architects, engineers and contractors. Okay, the operational responsibilities. We will handle building, building insurance and utility bills. The USDA carries liability insurance for tennis participants inside the building. The estimated annual operational cost beyond what the USDA will cover is approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. And through a generous donation from one of our board members, we already have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in our account to cover the first five years of operation. The plan for financial safety measures beyond the first five years, the LCTA understands the need to have financial safety measures in place. We are committed to plans for ongoing fundraising. It's also reasonable to believe that with the opening of a new facility. Local interest in tennis will vastly increase and fundraising potential will then grow as well. Our pledge. To the school. The funds have been raised thus far and been obtained via networking with our local tennis community and tennis alumni from WF West and Centaria. It is as important to us as it is to school, the Shale's School District. We are not asking the school district to commit any of their budget towards the building of the project or the operations of it once construction is done. We are planning it all ourselves. Mentioned earlier, we have a hundred and fifty-five subscribers. After the USDA begins managing the facility and launches their extensive programs for all ages and types of players. Local tennis participation is going to boom. All current fundraising dollars have come from a tennis community that only has one indoor court in the entire county. Soon the families, the number of families connected to tennis will grow and that will dramatically increase our ability to raise. Money to cover expenses far beyond what we already have. Thank you very much. Thanks for listening to us. And now next up is Kirby.
I don't need any presentation show. This is what you get. I, I get to talk about these stuff today. I just get to talk about some highlights of the wrestling program here in the district. Both at the high school and those below. And I want to give them some specifics regarding kind of national trends, state trends, and then what we've seen in the world. So. Some highlights from last year, WF West boys placed fourth in the state, they had one state champ. Surely the boys had a really strong, strong program. The girls had their first teams they placed in. They also placed fourth in the state. And they also had their first individual state champion. And along with that, they were the academic stage chance for a two-way progress. So lots of great things happen in the high school. At the middle school level, we had about seventy participants. We had an explosion at the middle school level in numbers. Part of that is they recently allowed sixth graders to participate at the middle school level typically. Or historically has been a sixth or seventh and eighth grade school only. But with the addition of another grade, we can increase our numbers. Few years ago, the middle school wrestling team practiced in the old shop room at the middle school, which was. And. That, that place is tight. You had wrestling mats that were literally rolled out and place wasn't big enough. So you had the mats rolling up the walls. To contain them. Since then, they've moved over to the gym at Olympic. It's not a seaside gym though, so they are still pretty cramped. There's no locker room, facilities over there at all. The passing facilities are very, very limited. So all the athletes have to walk over across street. And then they put all their gear down and put it in the gym and then they have. I would say it's generous to say five mat sessions. So if you have wrestling mats come out, there is some of the ones have smaller sessions, but. You have wrestling mat coming out there. It has about four and a half sessions of mat there to have a little practice. So that was seventy athletes. And it's very cramped. I've spoken with the, the coaches there at middle school, Doc Daniels, John Eckland, G T Eckland. My dad was my coach up until last year and Rick Radvich. It's very funny. If you looked at any of those, one of those coaches, any high school program would be lucky to have them, but we have. Three Washington Hall of Fame wrestling coaches at our middle school program, which is ridiculous. But right now they said that they can make do with, with the numbers that we have with seventy athletes in that small gym. But I'm looking for it. So. I'm going to give you some numbers. The most recent numbers I could find were up to twenty twenty-four. So. National participation of girls wrestling in twenty twenty-two was at thirty-two thousand breaks. In twenty twenty-four, that number grew to sixty-four thousand. So that's over a one hundred percent increase. So it's a hundred percent increase in participation at the national level. Washington has the fourth highest participation number in the entire country for girls, for girls. We are not for the state of the country. So we have. So we have a very high participation rate for our girls athletes at the high school level. In two thousand seventeen, the amount of states that had a sanctioned girls season was six states, and in twenty twenty-four, that number is now forty-five. So wrestling, girls wrestling is said to be the fastest-growing high school sport, more than. So if you look at our numbers at the middle school, we had seventy athletes last year, we had five girls. And so if you look at that participation rate, it's about seven percent, or seven percent of the numbers of our team was girls. National average is about twenty percent. So right now, we're maxed out of our number right there. So if we want to grow our girls program without you know, turning boys away or discouraging girls from coming out, we need to grow our space. So, yeah, the facility we have right now is efficient, but it's not efficient for much longer. You had a question regarding operating temperature. So I had the same question, because looking back in my career, I've wrestled in like uninsulated, unheated metal buildings at, you know, thirty degrees outside. I wrestled on a football field in middle school camp in the middle summer on a wrestling mat. But I know that we don't want to open up anyone's liability. So I reached out to one of the largest manufacturer of wrestling mats, Petri. Their operating temperature, they say that their mats are capable of operating at is forty to ninety degrees Fahrenheit. So I don't trust the manufacturer on this one. I don't think I've ever wrestled in a room that was seventy degrees. Because it's either freezing cold, or you're like us, when I was in high school, we'd put a damp cloth on the thermostat so that you turn your heater on and crank it up, however hot it gets. So that's just kind of my, my spiel. We are grateful for the support that we've had, grateful for the space. However, I don't think it's going to be enough, or to continually support our athletes and grow our, our sport.
How much more space we have, this facility spilt.
So if we are allocated, so it's the one tennis court plus the, like the Abrams that are associated, it's not just the area within Alliance. If you just like wanted to max out how many mats you could put, you could put, you can more than double our mass space. From the one, yeah, from all of it. Conservatively, you could double it. But if you just wanted to put about every single square foot, you could more than double it by quite a certain. All right, board of questions? Any questions?
So you don't have any concerns about the temperature piece and concussions or putting mats or anything like that?
I am not concerned. I, I said, I raised that concern in one of our steering committee meetings. So I reached out to a manufacturer, and they said that their mats are made to be used for forty and ninety degrees Fahrenheit. That was their, their operating temperature of their wrestling mats.
So are you, from your statistics, you're willing specifically to try and grow the girls wrestling at the middle school, is that right?
It's not that like I am trying to go, yeah, I'm just saying, if, if, yeah. If I don't do anything, girls are going to get angry. That, that's just what I would ask. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirby.
Tennis coach?
I have six minutes left.
Okay, I will be much faster than that. My name is Megan Wender. I'm the head coach for tennis for boys and girls. As you can see, that you have, I have a lot of people in the audience that are here with me today, so most of my players, my fellow coaches. So I'm not just speaking for myself. I am just going to read off my phone because I'm not the most polished speaker. But I, we are very passionate about this project. Obviously, this program, we had like so much hope. I'm a fellow like Bearcat, graduated years ago, whatever, and then came back to this area. And when I came back, they were like, hey, we're building a facility. And I was like, oh, that's awesome. And then I became the coach last year. And I was like, oh, this is crazy. And so now we're having conversation. It feels like in the tennis world, having conversation that, oh, it could happen, it might not happen. We're, there's a lot of hesitation. And so that was really discouraging to myself and to our team. When we're like, when's the opening? When's the opening? Everyone's asking, when's the opening? So I'm just going to touch base on a couple of our main frustrations in the world of tennis, which is just rain. So the logistics of our season, we had of just the fourteen matches that we had, those include like rainouts, not rainouts. We played two, and that was before spring break. We then, therefore, with all of those matches, had twelve indoor practices, none of which were at Thorbeks because the court was never available. So that meant that we were always inside the gym here, which is not safe. I mean, it's fine, it's fine. We, we are safe, we make good choices. But like, that's not, we're not like doing great swings. We're, it's, we're just making the best of our ability. So eight, so twelve indoor practices, eight matches all rescheduled. We had one match from a south team, we're the north team in this district. And we really tried to play the south teams because they're super competitive. They have a lot more access to tennis than we do. And so they're very strong. We tried to play a team, and then it rained, and then the, the match, we couldn't do it, we couldn't finish the match, and we also can't reschedule the match because of their busy season. And now we're basically playing every single day a match because we have three weeks left of season, and we have to get all of our league matches in. Anyway, so that was very frustrating. And then we also had another south team travel up just for it to rain, just for our match to be completely rained out. So that's the frustration of rain. I feel like I inherited a very successful program from, obviously, Jack. We have had major success with even the very limited access that we have in this town of one court, two courts when I was in high school. And I really very much agree, or to like, would like to state that if we, if this facility doesn't get built, I'm very concerned that this program is not going to do well. And not that our programs have to be successful, but we are very successful with the very limited access that we have. And the success could just grow, along with just get big enough. And if we have conversation about covering the four courts at WF West, I have thirty-five girls on my team, and thirty-five girls divided by four is not awesome. Thirty-five girls divided by six is still not awesome with this courts that we have, but we make it work because we have six courts, and that's amazing. A lot of the people in our league don't have six courts. So we're not, we're not sad about that. We love our six courts. We don't want to lose those by covering, like, covering it and then only having a total of four courts or whatever. So it'd be amazing to have the six courts plus a facility. Also selfishly, I'm an Orin Smith teacher. I teach third grade at Orin Smith, and I have got an entire Orin Smith staff, in my opinion, gung ho for this facility. So I know, I can speak for my, for the people around me that like PE would love. And my, I would, I'm, maybe I'm selfishly speaking, but I would love for my kids to experience PE. And I know that even just the little camps that Thorbeks has done in the summer, okay, sorry. Just the camps that I've done in the summer, like, I get a lot of students that have played tennis, and then it kind of dies because there's just not enough access. So.
Thanks. Thank you, Paul.